Well, good afternoon and welcome to the regular meeting of the City Council, including the Library and Observatory Board, Housing Authority Board, and the City Council representing the Redevelopment Successor Agency. Scheduled for 1:00 PM, October 5th, meeting 2023. It's now time for the flag salute, which will be led by Councilmember Meg Marker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you'll please put your hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is sacred, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice on all.
Thank you, Meg. Okay, well, now move on to the next item, and that's the City Clerk doing the roll call.
Thank you. Councilmember Molado?
Here.
Councilmember Marker?
Present.
Councilmember Wile?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Downs? Mayor Kite?
Here. We need a motion to excuse the Mayor Pro Tem Downs.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
And I'll second.
All in favor? Do we have a... I'm sorry. All in favor? Vote yes.
Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to a special presentation. A turnover by Gabe Cottin, Director of Marketing, and he will be introducing Dan Allen, the President of Preservation Mirage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When we sat down as a team to start to discuss the city's 50th anniversary, Dan and his team over at Preservation Mirage asked for a meeting, and they said, hey, I don't know if you know this, but the Elephant Car Wash sign is eligible for historical designation, and we're going to start the paperwork and work with the ownership there and the operator of that program to see if that can be a historical designated sign. And so they filed the paperwork at the last meeting. Remember, in September, the City Council did authorize that to be designated as a historical site. And so I'd like to welcome up Dan to kind of talk about some of the exciting things in the restoration process and the historical designation of that sign. Welcome, Dan.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Preservation Mirage is super excited about the newly designated Rancho Super Car Wash Elephant Sign. And in order to continue to raise funds for its ongoing maintenance and restoration, we've commissioned modernist artist John Pierman to create an original piece of art of the pink elephant. And we'll be celebrating the artwork and the historic designation of the pink elephant on October 20th from 5:00 to 7:00 PM at Tamarisk Country Club. And I'm excited to hear that many of you will be joining us that night. Tickets are still available on our website, but here we would like to present a framed poster of the artwork to the city. So thank you very much.
Gabe, what was the date again for the meeting at Tamarisk?
October 20th.
Is that open to the public?
It can be. It's a ticketed event. It's a fundraising event, but there are tickets available per Dan. And so if you just go to Preservation Mirage's website, you can find out more information about that event and upcoming events.
Okay, great. Thank you. Next item is non agenda public comments, and City Clerk will handle the public comments.
Thank you. Now is the time for anyone who'd like to speak on items not on the agenda. The first speaker is David Kowalczak.
Thank you very much. Well, thank you all very much for having me back. My name is David Kowalczak. I'm the Vice President of Human Resources for Eisenhower Health, and I'm thrilled to be back. So thank you very much. The chamber continues to grow. Currently, there are 569 members, with 140 new members joining since the beginning of the year. So I was just talking to Katie, and it sounds like hitting 600 is not going to be an issue. So we're excited about that. The growth is a combination of a great team in the board, our ambassadors, Katie's amazing team, and a fantastic partnership with our city. Thank you for your partnership. Now for an update from Eisenhower Health. First of all, I'd like to thank the City Council for your overwhelming support of Eisenhower each and every day. We truly appreciate it. We continue to see strong volumes in both inpatient and outpatient care settings, and we're ready for the upcoming season. An update on COVID. While COVID is still out there, and we will and will be for the foreseeable future, we have not been experiencing any spikes. Today, for instance, we have eight inpatient COVID patients, and continue to urge people to consider getting the new COVID vaccine in consultation with their primary care provider. Our main focus remains on delivering high quality and safety. Patient safety is the foundation of everything we do. Recently, we announced that Eisenhower achieved an A grade in LeapFrog's Spring Hospital Safety Survey. Eisenhower earned the only A grade in the Coachella Valley. I'm proud to announce that Eisenhower has been recognized by the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid with a five-star rating. Only 13% of U.S. hospitals and 9% of California hospitals have earned this achievement. Additionally, we recently earned a five-star rating from U.S. News and World Report. We were the number-one ranked hospital in the Inland Empire and ranked the number 12 hospital in the entire state of California. We're very proud of this, given the quality of healthcare institutions across the state. I'm also happy to announce that we're getting ready to celebrate our 2,700th newborn birth since opening our birthing center. Since my last visit here, we have been designated a Level 4 Trauma Center, and we're pushing for a Level 2 designation in the next 18 months. We once again want to thank the City Council and City Manager for supporting this effort. Also, since my last visit, we reopened our Grunhofer Surgery Center in the Dolores Hope Building with six new state-of-the-art OR suites. We now have 29 operating rooms across the health system. And the Lucy Kirchi Cancer Center expansion is underway. Our cardiovascular capital campaign is going great, and we've already raised $150 million of the $250 million needed for this campaign. And again, we sincerely thank the City of Rancho Mirage for their donation to this campaign. Today, Eisenhower's future is bright and strong. With five-star quality, we have now exceeded $1 billion in revenue annually. We have more than 1 million annual visits, and we're approaching 4,500 employees, making us the largest private employer in the valley. So thank you for the opportunity to make a few remarks.
Any comments, questions? You're doing a great job. We really appreciate everything you do for our residents in the valley.
Thank you so much for the kind words and support. Thank you.
Shane Masoud?
Well, good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and City Council. My name is Shane Masoud. I am the new Government Relations Manager for Southern California Edison. I wanted to come here today and introduce myself and let you know who I am. I've been in the field of government and public affairs for about 10 years now. I used to work for a local state senator in the Inland Empire. I worked for Caltrans, the California Department of Transportation, as their Public Information Officer, as well as worked for the City of Eucaypa in San Bernardino County as their Public Information Officer and Grants Coordinator. I'm hoping I can continue the success of my predecessors, Jennifer Cusack and Melissa Boyd, and having a great relationship with the City of Rancho Mirage. On a personal note, I grew up in the county next door to you, San Bernardino County. I've been married for seven years. I have two little boys. And in our free time, we enjoy the outdoors and camping. In this new role, I'm looking forward to working with you and city staff and learning more about your community. Once again, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Trish McFarlane?
Hello. My name is Trish McFarlane, and I live in 28 Champaign Circle in Rancho Mirage. And I'm here to try and follow following a model of the Huntington Beach, California, that managed to achieve a no mask and no vaccine mandate. So I'm here to ask the local representatives to put a measure on their agenda for the next council meeting, and asking the city to have no masks, no mandates, and no... to not be forced to do this. So this is about our individual liberty and to protect the liberty of the Rancho Mirage constituents. So I'm asking you to put this on the next agenda. Is that it? Thank you very much. It's the first time I've done this. Okay.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Wally Melendez.
Good afternoon, City Council, Administration, and we, the people. Speaking of not expensive real estate, not pomp and circumstance, but speaking of RMU, Rancho Mirage University. There's a need of higher education in Rancho Mirage. COD College of the Desert will not do, primarily especially because it's a police campus. Why a university here in Rancho Mirage? It's a small town. There's a bunch of gated communities. Beautiful library, beautiful astronomical... what'd you call that thing? Astronomy telescope. Beautiful. But no university. Let me give you a little example. You go to COD, and they hire mostly people with degrees from the north. They don't hire faculty from this area. We need faculty from this area. Why? Because it's a desert. It's a terrible desert. We just got off the hottest months of the year. Hey, but don't get too comfortable. This somewhat mild weather they were getting is only going to last a few months until February. So don't act up. And by the way, we also need apartments rent to own. And I'm not talking about condominiums. And we also need that famous hydrogen charging station. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Brad Anderson?
Good afternoon. My name is Brad Anderson. I live in the beautiful city of Rancho Mirage. I'm forward drive, actually. I wanted to speak on a few things. Actually, just one note, the Southern California Edison guy, I seen him at the Palm Springs City Council meeting, and I was sure it was the city manager sitting next to me. But anyway, I wanted to speak on Mr. Downs' comments at the last meeting. And he made a point about his predecessors, but the people running against him at the time when he was running for this office, that seat, that he did it, he's not suing the city. And he made a point of saying that at another meeting, too, where he showed his leisures to the Children's Museum. And I just want to interact. I used to believe that, too. I said, why would you sue the people that you live around? But when you have city government or city officials or certain aspects of the city use the city resources in a negative fashion, yes, that's the only recourse you have, is legal action. So I think those comments are really, should it be, I guess, absorbed by people and believed? Because it's true. You have to do certain things to certain people just for the reason, I guess, honor and ethics. And anyway, I wanted to speak on that. And at the last meeting, I believe, it was the last meeting, I spoke in favor of doing a stop sign at a private or complex off DeVal, near 30th. I forget the cross street. And I want to rescind my approver recommendation for that because I think a crosswalk is a city, I think everybody misled everybody at that meeting about kids going to school and have to cross the street and drag racing, which has nothing to do with a four-way stop. So I think Cathedral City put in a crosswalk on Dyna Shore, I believe, at the high school or one of the schools there for crosswalks with a flashing. That's the type of issue if we're going to have kids in the area. And stop-and-go traffic, that's not good for the environment. I mean, so I think slowing traffic down and making them stop. I've traveled that road a lot, so I would say it's not necessary to put a four-way stop sign. Just a crosswalk and indicators, and that's all. And I just want to speak on closed session. I see the Heckman case not on here anymore, and that's great. I hope they had some satisfactory pullout from that, and nobody paid too much money for each party. Did it pay too much money in attorney fees? Because, anyway, I just want to again state that when you have city officials or city council members use code compliance in a negative fashion against the city residents, you're going to have to expect legal actions. And that's all I have. Thank you.
That was the last speaker card. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on a matter that is not on today's agenda? That was the last speaker.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item will be comments from the council. And I'd like to begin with Member Molado. Do you have any comments?
No comments.
Okay. Member Marker, do you have any comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Yesterday, the Rancho Mirage Library and Observatory held their October Family Night titled Truck Petting Zoo. The event included 11 trucks, including the Riverside County Fire Department fire truck and ambulance, a Riverside County Sheriff Patrol vehicle along with three motorcycles, a large trash truck from BRTAC, and four trucks from our Public Works Division, including a tractor, a traffic signal truck, along with two other trucks. Whether it was blowing the horn on a garbage truck, lighting up the siren on the patrol vehicle, or getting to sit on the motorcycle, the more than 300 attendees had a wonderful time getting to see these impressive vehicles up close and personal. Congratulations to the Library and Observatory team, with special thanks to Valentine Kepphart and Deanne Dekel for planning such a wonderful community event, and the support of the sponsor Grace Helen Spearman Charitable Foundation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Meg. It sounds like everybody had a great time.
A wonderful way to bring the community together with
I agree.
the city.
Move on to Councilmember Wile. Do you have any comments?
I do, Mayor. Thank you. My comments today are very meaningful to me, and it has to do with the acknowledgement of the contribution of veterans to our society. I'd like to ask any veterans in the audience, I know of at least two, to stand up for a moment. Bill, I know you're one. Talon, thank you. Wally, thank you for your service. Thank you very much. Veterans Day, the origin dates back to November 11, 1919. But it wasn't until 1938 that it became a federal holiday. The United States is home to 16 million veterans, many of whom reside right here, including in Rancho Mirage. I'm proud to be one of those veterans as well. As part of the 50th anniversary, our community leaders wish to inaugurate a special Veterans Day celebration to honor the selfless service of our Rancho Mirage veterans. On November 9, at 5:30, the Rancho Mirage Amphitheater will host a heartfelt gathering to pay tribute to our esteemed residents who have served our nation. The event will feature touching stories, a memorial remembrance, a flag ceremony, and a recitation of the Pledge of Allegiance. In addition, Desert Theatricals will present a USO-style show reminiscent of the Boogie Woogie Bugle Boy era. This event is open to the public, and reservations are required. Seating reservations will be opening on October 9 at Desert Theatrical website, and it's also linked to our website here at the city. As a special gesture of gratitude to our Rancho Mirage veterans, VIP reserved seating will be available. And if you would like to secure that seating, please contact hayley, H-A-Y-L-E-Y, at ranchomaragecalifornia.gov to reserve your special and deserved seats. So this will be a wonderful, wonderful event for our veterans. Again, I'm so proud to be able to announce it. Marketing has done a great job in putting it together. Gabe, thank you for all your work on it, and I hope that many of you here will take advantage of it. Thanks very much, and thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ted. I have a couple of comments today, as well as the others. I'd like everyone to know that Rancho Mirage High School football has had some real excitement over the last couple of weeks. Not only did the Rattlers beat Palm Springs, yes, 26 to 10, but the first Rattler player recently made it all the way to the NFL. Kai, who is in our marketing department, recently put together a great story on Daniel Whelan. And if you would like to go ahead and play the video?
I believe Rancho Mirage, home as a player person, just treating everybody with respect and kindness, you know, to do the right thing when no one's looking.
This is Daniel Whelan, a former Rancho Mirage High School football player, who's taken his talents to new heights.
I would say just follow your dreams, and you never know what's going to happen. So just never give up.
Whelan recently made the Green Bay Packers football team as a punter, making him the first and only Rattler to play in the National Football League. Despite football not being his primary sport.
He was a soccer rugby player, tennis star here. He was the league champion tennis player. He's just an athlete.
Rancho Mirage head coach LD Matthews says Whelan was born in Ireland, moved to Rancho Mirage in his early teens, and didn't play football until he recruited him.
One day I was at one of his soccer games, and I watched him kick the ball, and I approached his mom and him, and I said, you need to kick the football.
After moving from the soccer pitch to the football field, Whelan ended up breaking nearly every kicking record in the Rattlers' record books. After graduating from Rancho Mirage High in 2017, Whelan earned a scholarship to play college football at UC Davis. He then signed with the New Orleans Saints, was cut, and ended up playing in the XFL. This summer, Whelan made the most of his second shot with an NFL team, making the Packers' 53-man roster and becoming the first Irish-born player to make an NFL team in nearly four decades. Current Rattlers are calling Whelan's journey to the NFL inspirational.
Daniel Whelan proves that anybody from anybody from anywhere, he's from Rancho, and he made it all the way up to the big leagues. You just got to work hard.
It just inspires me to know that even from a little valley like this, where you may not hear much from it, you can still make it really far, no matter who you are, what you do, as long as you work hard.
Now Whelan is offering advice to student athletes looking to follow in his footsteps.
I would say play as many sports as you can. If you don't know which sport you're going to fall in love with, and you don't know where it's going to lead.
A strong game plan, as Whelan continues his career, all while taking Rancho Mirage High School to new heights.
A lot of us, a few years ago, got involved with the Rattlers as the team went all the way to almost section finals. So, you know, we really built a relationship between the team and this community. And invite you to come to the next game, which will be this Friday. It'll be here at Rancho Mirage, and they'll be playing Shadow Hills. So I'm sure that a lot of Green Bay Packer fans will continue to follow Dan. So it's a great opportunity for the school and for the individuals. So let's move on to the next item.
Mayor, may I make one comment also? That Daniel's mother was employed at the Ritz-Carlton here in Rancho Mirage for many years. And so she was very much a part of the community as well. So not only was their son a successful football player, but the whole family has been very, very involved in our city. So obviously, we're extremely proud of them. Thank you, Mayor.
Great number of staff from the Ritz were involved in the three or four years that Dan was there. And we ended up taking a couple of buses up to the playoffs to see them play in the semifinals. So it was a great event, and hopefully, you'll all continue to follow Dan, and hopefully, he will be very successful in the future. So we'll now move on to the next item, which is the City Manager comments. Do you have any comments?
None today, Mr. Mayor, so I'll go ahead and summarize the consent calendar. So you have seven items on your consent calendar for consideration. Item number one is to waive the full reading of all ordinances introduced or adopted pursuant to this agenda. Item number two is to adopt ordinance number 1210, Second Reading, amending Chapter 5.12 Special Event Permits of Title V Business Taxes, License, and Regulations of the Rancho Mirage Municipal Code to better regulate special events on private residential property within the city. Item number three is to approve your September 7 regular meeting minutes. Item number four is to approve the appointment of Steven Moses to the Mobile Home Fair Practices Commission, and he is in attendance today. Item number five is to approve Special Assistance Fund awards to 30 different qualified nonprofits for a total of $88,250. Item number six are to approve contracts, and item number seven are to approve the demands. Before we go to the council, I'll turn this over to the City Clerk to handle public comment.
Thank you. I did not receive any speaker cards on the consent calendar. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on a consent calendar item? There are no speakers.
And, Mr. Mayor, before the council has any questions or a motion on this item, I'd like to turn it over to the City Attorney at this time.
Thank you, Isaiah. I just wanted to advise that the City Attorney's Office has advised Councilmember Marker of a potential conflict of interest since her business has provided the rescue mission with services within the last 12 months, and therefore recommended she recuse herself from the rescue mission item. Because the item is on consent calendar, she's not required to leave the dais, but will recuse herself from the vote on the item.
So to achieve that, just to make it simple, what I would request that the council does is take a motion and a second for every item but item number five. And then we can vote on item number five separately, which is where the potential conflict... on item number five separately, which is where the potential conflict is.
Okay, so we have council comments first. Anybody with comment, questions? Okay, so could I have a motion, please, to...
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item number five, which we, which will be a separate motion.
Can I have a second, please?
And I'll second.
Please vote. Did we have a vote, Adam Clark?
Let's try that one more time. Okay, sorry about that. Could you put your motions in one more time, your votes in one more time? And motion carries 4-0.
Thank you.
Now, Mayor, I'd like to make a separate motion for item number five for approval.
I'll second.
Okay, item number five is SAF awards. Another great year as far as donations. You heard the number that was donated, and the individual charities that it went to. Every year this increases a little bit, and we welcome the community to come to the city and explain to them their needs for additional funds in the future. So there is a motion on the floor, and is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, would you please vote?
Motion carries 3-0.
Okay, thank you.
Before we move on, since Stephen Moses is in the office, or office, audience, I'd like to invite him up just to say a few words. Thanks for being here today.
If I may, I'd like to share with the audience and the residents that are watching remotely about Mr. Moses, who I've nominated for this position on the Mobile Home Fair Practices Commission. Stephen Moses is a graduate, with a Bachelor of Science in Economics from Franklin and Marshall College. He has a J.D. cum laude from Harvard Law School, but of what is significant assistance to the city, he is, he participated in the creation of the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, also known as HUD, instrumental in the evolution of housing programs for low to moderate housing nationwide. He owned and managed over 100,000 units, developed numerous urban renewal and redevelopment projects nationwide, including Bunker Hill in Los Angeles. The National Housing Conference named him 1980 Housing Man of the Year. He served as the co-financed chair for the Democratic National Committee in four presidential campaigns. He is the founder of the Democratic National Headquarters. He has served on multiple college/university boards of trustees, including UCLA, Pittsor College, Franklin and Marshall College, Hebrew Union University, California State University, and Brentwood School. City of Palm Springs named him to the Appeals Board. He was the administrative appeals board member of the Voting Rights Districting Working Group and Transparency Commission. He is the recipient of numerous awards, and we are most grateful that you accepted our invitation to apply for the Mobile Home Fair Practices Commission. Thank you, Mr. Moses.
Thank you, that's all I wanted to say. No. I just wanted to thank you, Councilwoman Otto, for appointing me. When I moved here just a month or so ago from Palm Springs, I thought that was the end of my career of being involved in public service and public, in public activity. I was so delighted to be invited to join you, and I just want to be thankful for all that, and I'm not the elephant in the room. So anyway, and I think I know one of the council members.
We look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, did we finish voting number six?
We did. We're good to move on to the public hearing.
We'll now move on to item number seven, public hearings. Eight. Somebody gave me the wrong numbers. Okay, so environmental assessment, tentative parcel map, development agreement, and preliminary development plan cases related to Eisenhower Medical Center. And at this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Ben Torres, planning manager, who will review the staff report.
And Ben, before you start, I'd like to turn this over to the city attorney.
Hello again. The city attorney has advised Councilmember Marker of a potential conflict of interest since her business has provided Eisenhower with services within the last 12 months, and therefore recommended she recuse herself from the item. Because the item's not on the consent calendar, she will leave the dais until after the vote is taken on the item. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll proceed with the planning manager, Ben Torres.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. We'll wait for the presentation to pull up here. So the 4.31-acre Eisenhower MCA project site is located on the southeast corner of Country Club Drive and Willshire Palms Drive, shown here in red. The project site is bordered by residential uses to the north, east, and south. To the west is the medical office building. The project site is zone public slash quasi-public. So this project will consist of three buildings. The first building fronting Country Club Drive will be used for memory care and have a size of 19,890 square feet. The second building at the corner, or at the center of the site, will be used for childcare and have a size of 17,116 square feet. And lastly, towards the rear of the site, that will contain a 37,724 square foot building for administration purposes. All required setbacks shown in red are being met. Three trash enclosures will be located within the parking areas spread out to serve the various buildings. In addition, carports will be located at the center of the parking area. A total of 48 spaces will be covered with carports out of the total 136 parking spaces on site. Additional parking spaces will also be available if needed within the Eisenhower Medical Center main campus within the lot shown in blue, approximately 900 feet away from the site. A tentative parcel map is proposed to subdivide the property into four individual units for condominium purposes. The architectural design of the buildings can best be described as contemporary. The buildings with the most visible frontage will be along Country Club Drive, and that will be for the memory care. Exterior finishes will consist of plaster and a light dash finish painted in cool December in addition to various other colors. Accents will consist of Western red cedar wood cladding and perforated and laser-cut metal in a blue pearl color, in addition to other metal colors. The memory care building will utilize a variety of colors and materials to showcase along Country Club Drive. Along the north elevation, a metal screen wall will be utilized as an image wall. The maximum height of the buildings will be 30 feet 5 inches for only a small portion of the roof peak. Along Country Club Drive, the height of the building will be 20 feet. The taller portions of the building will be centered away from the front and side property lines and more towards the interior parking areas. These are some images of the potential image wall along Country Club Drive on the memory care building. No specific proposal has currently been made, and this will require further review by staff as part of a sign program. Along the south and west elevations, the building variations in color and material continue. From the west elevation, you can see the opening in the roof to the interior courtyard below. So the primary purpose of the memory care building is to serve families in the valley in need of memory care assistance by providing care and support for memory-associated health issues. The building will have two functions. One is the care of clients that are challenged with memory health issues, and two is an administrative and support space for caregivers of clients receiving care. A variety of open areas, large classrooms, offices, and resource areas will comprise of the memory care building. The childcare building will utilize the same materials as the memory care building with some slight variations in color, like the addition of the sour apple color. The single-story childcare building will be located at the center of the project site and will have a maximum height of 21 feet 8 inches. A variety of design elements are incorporated to bring interest to all areas of the building. The elevation still will incorporate sloping roof portions, but in a reduced scale when compared to the memory care building. The same roof heights and architectural design continue along the south and west elevations, with the majority of the building having a maximum height of 18 feet. The childcare building will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. and will serve only Eisenhower employees with their child daycare needs. The facility will serve ages from newborns to 5 years old, with a capacity for up to 138 children. The facility will have a variety of rooms for different age ranges, ranging from infant to preschool and pre-kindergarten, in addition to a few naprooms that will be spread throughout the facility to give the young age of the children a space to rest up. The facility will also have an outside play yard located on the west side of the building away from the residential. Parents will walk up to the front door to drop off and pick up their children. Lastly, the administration building, again, will utilize the same colors and materials as the childcare building, but without the rusted copper element. The maximum height of the administration building will be 25 feet 8 inches at the top of the sloping roof, with other heights ranging around 20 feet. The north elevation of the building will be fronting the parking lot and will be visible along Country Club Drive, although the building will be towards the rear of the site. These are additional elevations for the southern and western sides. Though, for reference, the maximum height of the south elevation along the building edges will range between 18 feet 3 inches to 20 feet. The purpose of the administration building will be to relocate Eisenhower administration functions to this off-campus location, which will allow the main Eisenhower Medical Center campus to be utilized solely for healthcare needs. The administration functions that will operate within this building will be human resources, legal, and marketing, to name a few. The floor plan of this building is separated depending on the department, with various workstations and offices within each area, and a centralized shared space will be located at the center of the building with various conference rooms, a break room, and other shared uses. These are some site sections showing the full extent of the project site buildings, in addition to the carport design, custom fence design, and stone pavers, which will be located at a driveway along Country Club Drive. This rendering is a view from Country Club Drive looking towards the project site. The memory care building is prominently visible with the childcare and administration buildings towards the back. And then, please be aware that no trees are shown here on this rendering to emphasize the buildings. This is a view of the childcare and administration buildings. Here you can see the custom fence design for the childcare within this rendering. And then lastly, this is a rendering of the administration building that will be located towards the rear of the project site. So landscaping on the site will consist of a variety of 36-inch box trees, which include Molga, Palo Blanco, and Desert Museum Palo Verde, in addition to a variety of palm trees, which are primarily date palms at a height of 26 feet. Other shrubs and accent plants will consist of gray desert spoon, red yucca, and a variety of other shrubs. Landscaping is proposed within the parking areas, project frontage, and around the buildings to provide a variety of interest with different heights and colors. Lighting on the project site will consist of freestanding light fixtures and under-canopy lighting for the carports. The project's photometric plan shows a zero-foot candlelight reading at the property lines, and staff also added a condition of approval that will set a maximum height of 15 feet for the freestanding light fixtures. The development agreement is a contract between the city and the Eisenhower Medical Center that outlines development rights and other requirements. In this case, the proposed development agreement is for a 10-year term, and key points on the agreement are to allow 39.8% lot coverage in order to maintain the project's one-story design. In addition, the agreement will also establish the use of the off-site parking spaces at the Eisenhower Medical Center campus, which will provide a minimum of 19 spaces. This project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Section 15332 for infill development projects. The project site is approximately 4.31 acres in size and has already been disturbed with the removal of a date palm grove over a decade ago. In addition, the project site is under the five-acre limit and is, and is in an urban setting, with all lands surrounding it developed, with the exception of one lot that's for residential purposes. The project meets all of the requirements to be categorized as an infill development project. The Planning Commission reviewed the project on September 14th, 2023, and unanimously adopted Resolution Number 2023 PC 04, recommending that the city council take the following actions. One, find the proposed project categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Section 15332 infill development projects, and approve the filing of a notice of exemption based on environmental assessment case number EA 22-0014. And, two, introduce and adopt ordinance next in order approving the development agreement between the Eisenhower Medical Center and the City of Rancho Mirage, DA 22-0002. And, three, adopt resolution next in order approving tentative parcel map TPM 23-0001 and preliminary development plan PDP 22-0002 regarding the proposed project. That concludes staff's presentation, and staff and the applicant are available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Excellent job. Questions or comments, and we'll move to the public testimony first.
Yes, so now is the appropriate time for anyone who wants to provide public testimony on this public hearing item. The first speaker is Omar Kobian.
Good afternoon, Mayor, city staff, and council members. My name is Omar Kobian, and I am a special representative for the Southwest Carpenters Union. I'm here standing, talking on behalf of over 5,000 members that live in Riverside County and about 600 that live in the Coachella Valley. You know, you mentioned something, Mayor, earlier about, you know, Eisenhower High School, the importance of our youth and maybe the future for them. We've got to ask ourselves, aside from one day hopefully being a professional football player, what is, what options does our youth have in the area for finding a good stable job? We know that college is not for everybody, and there's a large percentage that do go to college that come out in debt and don't make any money as well. So, you know, this project, we're not against this project, we're very much for it, and, you know, they're talking on earlier about how Eisenhower is ranked number five and top-ranked hospital, and I believe it is, but unfortunately Eisenhower has continuously also never really used a contractor that has a state-approved apprenticeship to make sure that our youth have the opportunity to work and get a good job. They hire contractors for one reason, the bottom line only, and we know because we track every single job in this area, and especially Eisenhower. So you could ask them, they can prove that they, that they haven't, which they have, continuously use contractors that don't pay the prevailing wage or the, or a good wage to make sure that they're paying into medical. What happens continuously is they hire contractors that will either pay cash, or they put the entire wage on the books without medical, without pension, and at the end of the day, us taxpayers are subsidizing those workers. And it happens on residential all the time. It should not be happening at the number-one hospital in the Atlanta Empire. Those are my comments. Thank you.
The next speaker is Wayne Avrasho.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The use of a childcare center and memory care center are terrific uses, but when I saw the, a development agreement, and your city attorney can advise and confirm, a development agreement is a contract between the city and the applicant. And the city's in a good position to extract some benefits for its residents, for the city. The last speaker from the Carpenters Union touched on a couple of potential benefits: hiring youth, hiring locally, hiring a percentage for union, and the council doesn't respond. I've watched a number of these council meetings, the first one I've attended in person, but there's no response back when people speak. So, a development agreement, again, what benefits did the city receive on this development agreement? The staff. Mr. Torres put up three bullet points, so 10-year term, fine, off-site parking, okay, a one-story building, but where are the benefits to the city? So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like you and the council to respond to that. Okay, I don't think we got much of a response, but let me continue, and I have a minute and 40 left. I was very anxious. I was very active in Los Angeles city and county government. I'm moving to Rancho Mirage and hope to be very active in Rancho Mirage city government. And there is no city, there's no attorney on the council, so these development agreements don't have that type of expertise. There's always litigation against the city. There's no attorney on the board, on the council who can speak to that. But this is a specific case where the city should negotiate in good faith with the applicant and derive something of benefit to the residents of Rancho Mirage. And the silence is a little of the old saying, "The silence is deafening," but it's perhaps more than deafening. It's not conducive to a good relationship with the residents. So I urge the council, I mean, I'm as big a football fan as anybody. We can talk football all day long, and I really appreciate a young man coming, making the NFL. It's tremendous. But more importantly, are all these young people who graduate high school in Rancho Mirage and the entire Coachella Valley that want to work? So let's put them to work, let's make deals with applicants and put some of that youth to work, not my youth, the young people and the other people that want to work in the community. So I urge the council to be a little more respectful of the people that come speak before you, and most substantively, speak to the issue of what the city can derive for its residents on development agreements. Thank you.
That was the last speaker card. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to provide public testimony on this item? That was the last speaker.
Thank you. We'll now move on to the council comments, and are there any comments down this way? Any comments, please?
Yes, I'll make a couple of comments, Mayor, if I may. I think that the addition of these buildings will contribute greatly to the benefit of our residents. Having a memory care center along with a childcare building for the benefit of the children of the employees is a great addition. The Eisenhower Health, as we know, is the single-largest employer in Rancho Mirage. Might be, it was quoted, "the largest employer in the valley," but I'm referencing Rancho Mirage. They do an exceptional job. We are very proud to have them, and I look forward to making the motion to approve these three exceptional additions. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I may. I'd like to congratulate Eisenhower Medical Center for these two particular buildings, childcare and memory care, both of significant importance and contribution, not only to our community, but most importantly, the employees. I worked in healthcare for many years as an x-ray technologist, and as a single mom, sometimes my schedule didn't always work with what childcare was provided. This will provide significant relief, and it'll provide reassurance and confidence to those parents that work long, hard hours. It's not all eight-hour shifts, they could be 10-hour shifts, they work four-ten's, or they, in the ER, we worked nine days, 10 off. They vary for whatever the unit needs, whether it's ER and trauma, whether it's ICU, whether it's the coronary care unit, whether it's a staff member on the floor. Congratulations for reaching out and helping your employees, because if the parents are reassured that their children are receiving the care that they need during the day, they're going to be relieved of that tension and be better employees to serve your patients. Likewise, also for your memory care. Many people today are helping their parents through this chapter, and it's uncharted in many instances. Thank you for doing so.
Thank you. Appreciate you making those comments. At this point, I believe we have comments in. Are there any future, any other comments today? I think those of us who attended the Planning Commission meeting with staff were really impressed by the details that Eisenhower put forward, and they're doing, I think, 75,000 square feet of development on that four acres. So it's really something that is going to grow in the future and continue to benefit residents of Rancho Mirage and the valley. So I can totally support this continued movement that Eisenhower's made in the future, and would like to have a motion to approve it.
I'll be happy to make that motion, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that the city council find the proposed project categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, pursuant to Section 15332, infill development projects, and approve the filing of a notice of exemption based on environmental assessment case number EA 22-0014. And B, approve and introduce ordinance number next in order. First reading, approving statutory development agreement DA 22-0002 with Eisenhower Medical Center regarding Eisenhower proposed project at APN 682-010-021. And C, adopt Resolution Number 2023 next in order, approving tentative parcel map TPM 23-001 and preliminary development plan PDP 22-002 for Eisenhower Medical Center proposed project.
Thank you, Ted. Can I have a second, please?
And I'll second. Thank you.
Please vote.
Motion carries 3-0 with Councilmember Marker recused.
Thank you. Congratulations to Eisenhower. Look forward to the future as we haven't seen in the past. Thanks for being here today. And that is the last item on the agenda, so I'd like to turn the meeting over to the city attorney to summarize closed session items.
Thank you, Mayor. We will be convening into closed session for the three items listed on the agenda before you, the first being a conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1. The case name, Vacation Rental Owners and Neighbors of Rancho Mirage et al. v. City of Rancho Mirage et al., case number CVRI 2100368. The second item will be conference with real property negotiators, or negotiate, yeah, sorry, negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8. The property having APN assessor's parcel number 684150011. With negotiations will be Isaiah Hagerman, the city manager, and the negotiating parties will be Porcupine Properties, and under negotiation will be considering the price and terms of payment. The third item will be conference with real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8. Property having assessor's parcel number 689180012. Negotiations will be held by Isaiah Hagerman, the city manager and executive director, and the negotiating parties will be Rancho Mirage Housing Authority and Blue Companies. Under negotiation are the price and terms of payment.
Thank you. We'll now reset to closed session. We're reconvening the open session.
And we're going to turn this over to our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Isaiah, there's no reportable action taken during closed session today. Thank you.
Closed session. Adjourn.